Stephanie?
Here.
Me?
Here.
John?
Here.
Travis?
Here.
Nah.
Let your legion.
Let your legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The motion for the consent agenda.
We need to table five A, six I, and six J.
Five, five I.
A.
Five A.
Five A, okay.
Six I and six J.
Okay. Do you have a motion? Second, one favor.
Five.
This is public input. This is a time and place for discussion items not already on the agenda with the time limit of three minutes each.
Anybody out there have anything to bring forward?
Budget presentation library. She on there?
Yep.
Yep.
Hi.
Hi, Amy.
Hey, Chris. Hi, I'm here and so is Daryl Aaron, our board treasurer. I'm gonna let Daryl field any questions.
Yes, so I'm here and and one thing that I need to point out before we get started is that we had a discussion with Brandon Siggens today and we need to make a not insignificant adjustment to one of the line items. So I believe the council already voted on this though to afford the restoration of the basketball. And so that line item needs to be adjusted from fifteen thousand to thirty-one thousand five hundred.
Is that fifteen thousand already in the budget, right?
That that is what we already had in our request, yes.
There is fifteen thousand in this year's budget, which will probably not be spent unless they can move pretty fast. So we would have to re-budget that fifteen thousand next year.
So we re-budget it as thirty-one five.
Yeah, we probably won't spend the fifteen this year.
Is that all you got?
That's the only change that I have from what we submitted, yes.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? What they're what they're talking about is we had a we had a meeting with the historical committee, Becky and Ann Opetz and John and I and Brandon. And we talked about fixing the history center and the library. Library, remember last year we budgeted fifteen thousand, that could only be spent on that one thing. Well, to bring bring it all up to priority ones, it was like thirty-one thousand five hundred. So we talked about that and told them to ask for it, to try to get that done. So that's what that is. Do you have any questions for him?
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you if you asked a question.
No.
No, we are just bringing somebody else up to date about what was what the explanation was.
Great.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Salty Swoon.
Hi, I did send some information a week ago. Were you, did you all receive that? Just a report of what the last year in San Antonio is?
It was all good. You all see it?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So I don't really have anything new other than what was on there. Our crisis assistance that we've been doing for people who are impacted by the pandemic in the Durachio. We helped ten households in December and January with one-time help with bills like rent or water when they're behind because of lost income. That's the only new thing, I think. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for him?
I just had one question. She might not be able to hear me, but they're asking for the same amount as they did this year. But some of that money was to be used for after-school, the cafe. They did not have that. So I was wondering if they held that money back or if they used it for something else.
I think we gave them the, somebody checked me, but I believe that we told them to take the money from the cafe since it would not be being used and to use it for families who needed stuff. Like COVID, COVID relief stuff is what I remember.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, because they asked about it.
Yeah, I had spoken with you a couple of months ago and that was that was my understanding, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't here, so.
As far as, I mean, we were hopeful that we'll be able to do the after-school program. Last summer, we did do some, you know, take-home activities and things and we can do at least that this summer and then hopefully the full program in the fall pending situation.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question and I'm sorry if I missed something that I was supposed to see, but I haven't seen the budgets. Was I supposed to get those in an email somewhere?
You did, the copies that you guys received from them, you didn't make, Christina didn't make copies for the council?
I didn't get anything yet.
I haven't seen any of these budgets. So when we're talking about like the library, I've not seen that.
Yeah.
So I thought that they were gonna be here tonight like we normally do where I would see everything. And so I haven't seen any of this.
Okay, I apologize because they forwarded these emails to me, so I just assumed that Christina made copies for you and gave them to you guys.
No.
All right, Brandon and I will make sure you guys get them all tomorrow.
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead.
All right, I just want to, I went back to just see if I overlooked something, but I don't, I don't have it.
It's it's just a lack of communication, I guess. Okay.
Everybody know what you call?
Yep. We're done with giving. So then you guys know that their final request was twenty thousand?
No.
What was, what was the last?
Their request was twenty thousand last year and they requested the same off this year.
What about the library? Was there relatively the same?
There was a slight increase and they budgeted a three percent salary increase for all the employees. They went up on a few items. They went up two hundred on technology. They went up one hundred on programs. They went up, wait a minute, library materials, they went up three hundred dollars.
I'm sorry, I should have said something earlier, but when he asked if everybody saw it and everybody said yes, and so I thought I just missed it. So I'm sorry.
No, like I said, that would that would have been mine. I just assumed that you guys got them and I should have double-checked with Brandon and Christina. They went up, that was where the main ones where they went up. And then they stayed the same as far as revenues. It looks like they're gonna receive the same as as last year, but the only difference would be just the three percent increase in wages and then those few items that I told you. And then the extra sixteen thousand five hundred for the rest wall.
History Center. Can we look for History Center?
History Center?
Should be Eric. We do not have his report.
Eric's working, so he's not, he's not available.
As far as the History Center, what we've done in the past is we budget the amount of what the city has to pay for property tax. Usually the city does not pay themselves property tax, but since that building is used for a commercial use and they rent the apartments, they, we have to pay property tax on it. So that's usually about a little over a thousand dollars. And then we give them in the past four thousand five hundred dollars each year for operating expenses. And I have that heard from them to see if they're requesting that same amount this this coming.
And what did, what did we? We gave the library fifteen thousand last year. We gave the History Center fourteen nine, right?
Yeah.
Remember what that was, what number was on that?
The fourteen thousand nine hundred we budgeted this fiscal year to start repairs on the.
There was gonna be a little bit left, if I remember right.
It was ten thousand.
Ten dollars five hundred, something like that. So it was gonna be like four thousand and change.
But don't we have to use part of that county to repair that whatever's going on?
Yes, when we did the inspections for rental property, most of the stuff was inside and Eric and the History Center took care of that. But on the outside, the stairwell that goes up to the apartments, the plaster is coming down on the sidewalls and that needs to be repaired. Eric was trying to find companies to do that and the one company that Wilson's used for the other side, they couldn't do it. They said it was too cold and wanted to wait till it warms up and I don't think it got done. So we still need to take care of that.
So there isn't anything left, probably.
It's not, that's not gonna be that expensive.
Okay. Wasn't there an issue with the door?
I, I was asked that too, but I'm pretty sure Travis found out that we did not have to meet a code that we thought we would have to. So they went ahead and repaired the door themselves.
Okay.
So it's it's fine right now, but it's probably something that's gonna be have to be replaced in the future.
Okay, I just, I remember the conversation that there was a door, the door. And nobody makes that door, that type of door or I can't remember. I had to do with the push bar.
Yeah, we thought we didn't have to have the breaker bar, but Travis found out that it didn't have to. And I haven't talked to him, so unless he found out different from that point, but the maintenance guys did fix what needed to be fixed.
What needed to be fixed, okay.
Cemetery.
The cemetery should not be much different than this this year. We do need to increase it slightly because we decided, you guys decided to renew the contract with Jordans. Their price was higher than we had paid in the previous year, but we decided that their work, the quality of their work was exceeded the amount that the increase was. And they did agree to do another three-year contract at that same price. So we should be able to maintain that and I haven't, I didn't get a chance to talk to Travis in the last few days. Even then, he was gone on vacation for a while to see if there's anything new. I don't know if you guys talked about any type of computerized system to, I know we put the directory out there and we've got that installed.
Didn't we have, didn't we budget that last year for the computer, for that?
No, we didn't.
Okay. What about?
Is Christina on there?
Yes.
I don't know if she, they talked about that.
The trees on the east end, the very old part, you know, the ones, I mean, every time the wind blows, the branch breaks off of them.
Most of the trees were taken down, that needed to be taken down in previous budgets, but I'm not sure once Durachio went through what has happened since then.
You guys know what trees I'm talking about? They're far east kind of.
On the old section.
Yeah, huge trees.
We did have Si take down several of those though, so most of them should be down.
I think Durachio probably took everything that was weak out of there, so.
So just, just go through cemetery, see if you think those trees need to come down. Because it seems like every time we have a strong wind, the branch falls, so.
So since we did sign up a three-year contract with them and without a price increase, the budget for cemetery should be about the same.
So should we put in there for the computerized system? Christina?
I have been looking online at Carbsnet and trying to see what other companies, because unfortunately the company that we originally started to look at that we wanted to use, the main guy is no longer with that company. In fact, he doesn't even do cemeteries anymore. He works with a different one of our contractors. So that's not, I'm not sure that company even exists anymore. He was kind of the reason we wanted that one. So we are still, Marshall and I are on the outlook for trying to find a good company and getting quote back. I think we even have a setup on February seventeenth, I believe, someday that's gonna come and talk to us and get us a bid and see what our needs are and what they could do for us.
Okay. All right, anybody got any else questions? Christina or cemetery? Economic development.
Is that me?
That's you.
That's you.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Hi, Brandon. My name's Joe. So it's been kind of a hard year for all of us, but the CDG, the organization I work for, was able to help many Mount Vernon and Lisbon businesses. I wanted to tell you a little bit about that. So the Small Business Relief Fund benefited business in both Mount Vernon and Lisbon with grants to help during the early months of COVID. In all, there were eighty-two businesses in Mount Vernon and Lisbon and they received a total of two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand in monies. Those monies were donated by the City of Mount Vernon, the City of Lisbon, the CDG, and then also through donations to the CCDG, their Mark for Business Relief, to either or both MBI or else. So when people donated money to us, they could say specifically they wanted to go to Mount Vernon or to Lisbon. And so that's where those monies came from. Some of the Lisbon businesses benefited, included D and D Body Shop, O'Dillan's Junction Auto Sales, Addy's Public House, Barnyard Screen Report, Regal Crown and others. And we were also able to help eight businesses through our annual bid grants, business improvement grants. In all, an additional ten thousand was granted to Mount Vernon and Lisbon business owners, including Dan Albright, W and Sarah Burner, Luke and Casey Crome. So this is all in addition to our marketing and promotion work with the visitor guides and tear-off maps in both communities and our ongoing fat financial supporting events in both communities and two thousand dollars in scholarships to students in both Mount Vernon and Lisbon. So we enjoy working with the City of Lisbon and staff and volunteers and we look forward to another hopefully better year, this year, twenty twenty-one. And we're asking for six thousand again, it's the same we ask every year when we come there and to help with annual expenses. We'll continue to be an active partner. So I I gave to everybody two of my P and Ls. And if you're not aware, the CDG is actually two work organizations. The Mount Vernon Lisbon Community Development Group and the Mount Vernon Lisbon Community Charitable Development Group. So the one is a five and one C three. So we're able to take donations through there. And so we do all of our charitable work, professor work, this sort of thing, through the one organization and all of our business improvement stuff through the other organization. So it's kind of spelled out there really clearly. You can kind of see what we did when you look at the two organizations. The Charitable Development Group lost some money this year and a lot of that is due to festivals we didn't have. So there was no festival income this year. And then the CDG didn't necessarily make the money, but they didn't lose money this year. And that's mainly because there's not a lot of expenses since we weren't really doing well this year. But I'm really proud of being able to help as many businesses as we have in the past. And that's basically my report and all of that. Any questions?
Any questions for Joe?
No, that's pretty amazing that you guys were able to help that many businesses with that power. That's awesome.
Well, it was, you guys do, it's all of us, the whole community, right? Everybody can only get to do it.
Yes, we appreciate it.
The other part of that fund is where the Money for B Lisbon comes out of.
Oh, thank you.
We've had, we've had success with that program in the last two years. And so we would need to decide with this budget, if you guys want to budget five thousand five hundred again. We were able to give a second place this year for twenty-five hundred because we have funds left from the the business, small business fund we did for COVID. But usually the year before it was, it was two years. This is the third year, isn't it?
Third year.
Third year, yeah. So two years before then, we gave out five thousand dollars. So if you guys want to continue doing that, this would be where it would be budgeted.
So put it in the budget and if we decide not to, we'll take it out.
All right.
And Barb, who manages that program, it's on my board now too. So anyway, it's a good, good work of an action.
All right. Community, community beautification.
This is where we use funds for for trees within the community. There was a lot of trees that came down during Durachio, so the money that we budgeted for this year, most of it was not used because those trees came down and I think a lot of them were reimbursed through the CARES Act or other grant money that we will be receiving. So we still have money in there this year. I also, before I retired, I applied for a grant where they would come and do a survey of the community again for the ash trees. They do mapping, they show us where all of them are. They do tests to see what condition they're in, which, you know, what priorities need to come down first and whatever. So I haven't heard, I did hear back from them letting me know that we got that grant, but I never received information when they're gonna start doing that. And I imagine because of COVID, it probably got delayed like everything else. So we'd, we'd have that to look forward to. So once we, I think Lisbon did it several years before I came back because we had an old report, but they were gonna come back and redo it. So we still have that, which will determine which ones need to come down right away. But like I said, luckily, a lot of those trees came down in the storm, but we still have a lot more to do. We budgeted fifteen thousand this year. We've only spent a little over three, so we've got some money to play with this this spring. But we probably should budget just as much next year because we had, at one time, we had a hundred and two ash trees. And so I'm not sure where we're at right now, but it's still probably at least two-thirds of that that will still need to come down.
I thought it was a hundred and five, but I'll take your number.
Hopefully it's lower than.
I'd rather have your number a lot lower now.
Yeah.
Maybe Durachio took it out.
There you go.
Or the tops of them off. So like I said, in the, this year and in the past, we've budgeted around fifteen thousand, so I would recommend keeping it at that.
Historical preservation. Lander.
Lander? Yep, yep. Okay, we submitted a budget request for seven thousand one hundred and ten dollars and that represents a decrease of about thirty-six hundred dollars over the current year budget. Included in that budget are just routine expenses for memberships, for meetings and for training, for our WIZ website, for our access to Zoom so that we can have safe meetings. It also includes one large number, and that is six thousand dollars for a possible preservation plan for the Myers Farmstead Historic District. That nomination to the National Register of Historic Places is in process. It's either, it's either in Des Moines or it's in Washington DC. We're not sure. We have to track it online and there isn't anything showing up right now. But it has passed through the state process, so and it's been approved at the state level. The next logical step is to do a preservation plan for that, for those barns. Those preservation plans will look much like the preservation plans that you have in your hands for the library building or History Center. So what these preservation plans do is is they offer a blueprint for moving forward in a methodic way to rehabilitate these buildings. The preservation plan for the Myers Farmstead Historic District is, we think is gonna be a little bit higher because we believe that we need to bring in a structural engineer to make sure that the structures are completely safe before we start to do anything with them. We just think that extra layer of advice and recommendations will be good for the overall project. That's a hefty number, but we also think that we can get some grant money to help us with that. And I have been pursuing that, just don't have anything to report tonight.
Anybody have any questions for Ann?
This will help us, this will help us get some grants too, having that survey done.
What I'd ask them, Ann, is if anybody had any questions for you. And John said, John said with, let's get the preservation plan, that'll help getting with the grant, getting grants also.
It's absolute, it's a requirement for most grants. The, one of the first questions that the grant organization will ask is, do you have a preservation plan? And if you do, please attach it. And it, it moves your application to the top of the list.
Any questions for her? Thank you, Ann.
But that said, I was listening in on the discussions with the library and with the History Center. We have those preservation plans in place and we also have a number of opportunities available to us to help with some of those projects that are listed in those plans. I have a conference call scheduled for tomorrow morning with the State Historic Preservation Office to get their opinion on how we should proceed. Because it's possible that we could be asking for some help from the state for three projects. The library building, the History Center building and the Myers Farmstead, the barns in the Myers Farmstead Historic District. So those things are all, right now, they're just moving, they're moving in the right direction, but they haven't landed anywhere, so we'll hope that in the next couple of weeks, those will start to take shape a little bit and we can better talk about how much money would be needed to do some of these projects if we can get some grant money to help us. Does that all make sense?
Yep, yes.
Any other questions? All right, Ann, thank you very much.
Hey, one, one more question from Historic Preservation. We'd like to ask if the city intends to continue the downtown investment program for next year. That's, that's a program that's funded with TIP money?
We usually budget twenty thousand dollars each year for that.
I mean, we'll have to discuss it during budget and see what council votes on.
That's the mail. I'm in favor of it.
I'm in favor of it as well.
And when I did the TIP certification that was due on December, I did include that in the TIP certification.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
As of, as of yes, we are, but we, it ain't, that ain't official yet. I mean, we're gonna have to vote on it at a later time, but it's kind of a consensus one.
But this is something that would, that will be settled by the time we certify the budget in March?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Anything else, Ann?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's all. Discussion and possible action regarding workshops to update handbook.
So I put this on there. This is in reference to Sarah's discussion point at the end of the last meeting. And I was just looking for some direction on, she thought a workshop or a committee would be suitable for the handbook. So Sarah, do you have anything else?
I, I just think we could get a lot more done in a more efficient time and get it done if we just had just even three workshops and just hammer everything out.
So you're one volunteer, is the other one?
Because, well, I think what she's talking about is whole council workshops. Because we, we initially started out having, we were gonna have workshops and then all of a sudden, we were gonna make it part of a council meeting. And now I think what Sarah's asking is for it to go back to workshops, it's own night.
And just get it done.
That's the only thing we're discussing.
It's a good idea.
And we could be done with it in a couple of months versus.
Months.
Months, you know?
Versus all year.
Yeah, I mean, and by that time, we'll be making more changes. Who knows, there might be more changes.
Well, when do you wanna have them?
Um.
You wanna get through the budget?
Let's get through the budget, I would say. I mean, we've got a whole bunch of budgets coming up. But I would say let's at least shoot for the end of February, beginning of March, maybe we start in March. I think by February, end of February, we're done. With all the presentations.
Everybody good with that?
Everybody good with that?
Monday nights work all night, all week.
Yep.
I would say the sooner the better.
Yep.
Because there's definitely some stuff in there that needs addressed.
So let's look at the end of February, beginning of March. We'll talk about it again at a February, February eighth meeting, all right?
Yep, yep. Put it on that agenda and we'll finalize dates. Thank you.
Discussion and possible action regarding handling of animals at large.
All right, so this, you should all have the email from Chief Shannon in reference to the animals. Reader, Reader Digest version of this is, per practice was for the Lisbon Police Department. We're separate. We found a dog. We tried to look for the owner, couldn't find it. Took a seat around the community society. Technically, the owner is responsible for the hundred dollar fee, but I'm sure that the city has eight hundred dollar fees, you know, in the past, so. Chief Shannon reached out to me to put this on the agenda. His officers in Mount Vernon, if they find an animal, if they take it down to the, behind the ambulance building, they have a kennel down there. And basically what it does is it keeps the officers in town. They don't have to take the animal out. The city of Mount Vernon assesses a twenty-five dollar charge. That's once the animals logged in and fed. The city workers feed them. And then another day or two, they go up to Cedar Valley Community Society beyond that, but. Absolutely. We found, the city, we've worked with Cedar Valley Community Society. We currently have a contract with them as well. This is a port of us, the ability to have the discretion with animals that are just running loose. We capture them, we put them in a kennel. An hour later, the owner calls us, like, I'm missing my dog. Can you find it? We've already got it or we're gonna have it. And just kind of eliminating the Cedar Valley from that process immediately. Freeze the officers up quicker to get back to other things that are a larger priority. We put them in the kennels. Usually we keep them there for a day, depending on the dog or what the size of the dog is. If it's cold and it's a tiny little dog, they're gonna go into a, into our garage, probably in a quarter, in a heated area, stuff like that. So we use our discretion, what's in the best case. If it's a sick or injured animal, they're gonna go straight to Cedar Valley regardless, from that standpoint. But it gives, it's truly a pretty big money saver for the cities as well. You mentioned a hundred dollars, but we usually get billed about a hundred and seventy-five to three hundred dollars depending on what's going on.
You mentioned $100, but we usually get billed about $175 to $300, depending on what's going on with the animals that you take there and come back. And so I would say, I have to run the numbers, but I would say probably 90-plus percentage of the animals that we collect are returned to their owners within a few hours. And then that percentage crawls up a little bit more when you start talking to the 24-hour mark. Very rarely do we get to the point where we have to take some, take an animal to Cedar Valley from that standpoint. So it's just another step in the process, it's a quick and more efficient way for us to do that. Our kennels are inspected by staff from the Iowa State University, signed off on each year too and stuff like that. It's a simple, easy way, it's $25 fee for the impound and put it in the kennel to maintain the kennel, pay for the inspections, pay for the dog food, pay for the staff to feed the animal and different things like that versus what the owners would be paying Cedar Valley, it's a cost saving for them as well.
So it's $25, you, you put the dog in there, $25, no one claims it, then you take it up to Cedar Valley, and then we get the bill for that.
We turn, yeah, correct, we turn it over at that point.
And so when we're talking about the $25 fee, are you saying the city of Lisbon would pay the city of Mount Vernon that? Or the owner would pay that?
The owner of my collection of the dog would pay the city of Mount Vernon for that fee. So it would be going back over to the city for that.
The only time we would get a bill is if that dog, no one claims it and goes to...
Mount Vernon is offering their building...
Yeah, I just don't even know why we're even talking about it, really. Because, I mean, it seems like a no-brainer to me, we would just follow whatever your policy is.
But it's a change of process for what you're currently doing.
We don't have...
We're gonna see some, yeah.
We don't care. You're our guy.
We'll continue to see some of these little anomalies like these, like we did things a little bit different. Just trying to flush some of those out, kind of make them a little more consistent, so across all communities from that standpoint.
Oh, I absolutely agree, it should be consistent across.
Yeah, I think you have a great point.
Well, I make a motion that we follow your process.
And by our code, it shouldn't, if I get that right.
No, I think codes are pretty similar that way.
And I second that motion.
A motion and a second.
So I have a question. So you say if they go to Cedar Valley and they charge you $100, then we have to pay that $100 to you?
No, no, no.
We pay that to Cedar Valley.
If the owner doesn't pay.
Understood.
I think technically the owner is supposed to...
The owner's supposed to pay that fee.
We don't know who the owner is, that's why the dog would probably end up there.
And if, yeah, if somebody dumps a stray in town or something like that, the dog, you know, we would hold it for 24 hours, depending on what's going on. We put it all over social media, trying to get a return. If there's no claim or nothing going on from that standpoint, we would then transfer ownership within 24 or 48 hours to the Cedar Valley Humane Society. They would again try to do stuff, if it's not claimed, they would send the city of Lisbon a bill.
And there's something else weird about that too, because I remember one Saturday night, Jeff Frinker called me and needed permission to take a dog to Cedar Valley because he's not allowed to leave the city limits of Lisbon without permission to take that dog in. So he called me to make sure that it was okay to take the dog in. So that must have been, I don't know what, but...
So I'm just trying to get my head around all this. So we joined the forces, but yet we're still paying that as Lisbon, right? Wouldn't that be part of your budget, yearly budget for that?
You know, the city of Mount Vernon budgets animal patrol separately from the police department.
Okay, that's, I guess we did that as...
Absolutely, yeah.
So you're gonna do that too?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want to ever look at the budget? Basically, we don't have an animal patrol officer, so we refer to the police department and then open that.
Okay, I get it, that's fine, I'm good.
Good?
Yeah.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Discussion.
Is that a resolution or?
No.
Okay.
Just so you know, we did $500 this year for animal control.
Establishing a temporary comprehensive plan committee.
So EC Cog reached out to us and they're renewing our comprehensive plan. So they requested to get a committee together. So I don't have all the members yet, there's not tons of volunteers wanting to do this. However, Connie and I discussed this and we're gonna put the P and Z board on there. Brett Ricker, who's a business owner, has offered to be on the committee. Connie Meyer stated she would be on it. I want to get a representative from the school, a representative from Historic Preservation. I need a council member, Doug O'Connor, and then myself. Basically, there'll be one-hour meetings, once a month, for about six months. And then they're gonna, basically they want the input from all different aspects of the community to come up with this plan that you guys have...
I would rather him.
Too late, I already volunteered.
I was gonna say Travis would be a good one because he's really passionate about that bypass.
Oh, well, go for it, boy. Go for it, you get that.
Do you want to do a motion?
No.
Well, why can't you have two? You wouldn't have a quorum. You'd only have two. If you've got two council members who want to be on it...
Yeah, I think that way if one's gone, we have...
Yeah, that's all right, okay.
Can you do this? I'm, I'm, I would love to be part of it.
So I just need a, obviously we won't know the members yet, but that's the framework of the committee.
Where does this start?
He's behind, it sounds like, so I would assume it's gonna start probably middle February.
I'm gonna go ahead and reach out to those people.
We need a motion and a second to form a committee. And it would be just a temporary committee now.
My motion to form a committee.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing for proposed maximum property tax levies for fiscal year 2022.
Motion to go into public hearing.
A motion and a second. Travis.
Aye.
Nate.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Are we going in public hearing? Anybody got anything to say?
This is just, I mean, Connie, correct me if I'm wrong, we just have to do this, this is the maximum that it could be. And it's just something new that they require us to do as of last year, I think was the first time we... As of last year, yes. But what it entails is if, even though our property valuations go up each year, we have new houses that are built, if we ask for the same dollar amount as we asked for this year, that's what our rate would be. But of course, you know, you add houses, you add expenses, you add everything else. So you're gonna need that money that comes into this. So it's kind of misleading to the public. And it does not entail the debt service levies that we need to pay our bonds back. So it's a little misleading, but it's a new requirement that we have to do effective last year. So it does show that our property tax rate would go down. But that's mainly because we levy for benefits for employees. And now that we will not be paying the police benefits out of our budget here, we will just be paying one lump sum to Mount Vernon Police Department. That number went down, so that's where the decrease is on that. And also, like I said, we increased our property values, but there's no way that we would keep, ask for the same amount of dollars as we did last year. We need that money to take care of this new property that came into Lisbon. That makes sense?
Motion to go out of public hearing?
A motion and a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 03, 2021, approving the maximum property tax dollars for budget year July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022.
So move.
A motion.
Second.
A second.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Nate.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye. Stephanie.
Aye. It's confusing because I think John thought you were saying that he was the second.
Public hearing for change to ordinance 6911, no removal.
Motion to go into public hearing, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so I know this has been a hot topic of late. You'll see on the notice of public hearing, as the discussion last time, we changed all the, like it said, snow ordinance to snow emergency. And you'll see on the little graph at the bottom there, we added Business 30 within the city limits will be added to the snow route. And also, for our last council meeting's discussion, West South Street between South Washington and South Jefferson, which runs kind of in front of the school there.
Has something been sent out to those residents?
Well, we kind of talked about this with the ground being frozen. I would assume this would not, you know, there's a, what is it, 30-day action period that this wouldn't go into effect. So my guess is this won't really take effect until next year because the ground's, we can't put signs in there. So it would be effective after this snow season.
I still, I still would like people on West South Street to have letters sent to them, letting them know that.
And truthfully, they probably should have had letters sent to them prior to this public hearing so that they could have been here to meet, if they wanted to be, in my opinion.
But I mean, it just makes sense. I mean, it is hard to drive down there when there's a lot of snow and you have school going on.
And then also, just for clarification purpose, where it talks about the snow removal. So how we've been interpreting this is if you look in 6911 subsection 2, it says snow routes. So basically, during the whole entire time of the snow emergency, you can't park your vehicle on any of those streets until the snow has stopped and the street is clear. And then if they pass, if they make a pass through and it's still snowing, that the street's not considered clear. And then you go down to C, down below, it says when a snow bridge has been in effect. What that's saying is even though, if the snow bridge is in effect and even though the street is clear, you can't park there from 2:00 to 6:00 AM. So basically what that means is so the guys can come in and remove piles of snow, is our understanding of why that's there. So if that's how you have always interpreted it, or that's what you want, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page with that.
I agree.
Any good questions?
If we're all on the same page, I can get with Doug and we'll make sure that everybody's on the same page with the police department so we can start enforcing this a little closer.
Yeah, all right. Motion to go out of public hearing, second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
First reading, ordinance 6911, snow removal, possible suspension of rules, place of ordinance on third and final... I gotta approve the first one, right?
Motion to approve the first reading.
A motion and a second.
Second.
A motion and a second. John.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Nate.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Aye.
Possible suspension of rules and placing ordinance on third and final reading.
So I don't really usually like to do this anyway, and I really don't want to do it if they haven't even been notified or don't even know that this was, you know...
Agreed.
So I would not be in favor of doing that.
Does anybody have a motion?
No motion.
Okay. Public hearing for change is to chapter 63.04, special speed zones for city of Lisbon ordinance.
Motion to go into public hearing.
A motion and a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So this is, we discussed this last time as well. This is changing all references to US Highway 30 to Business 30 and the speed zones. Changing the 55 mile an hour zone to 45, which you should see the pictures there. And then also, where it's normally 45 except when the beacon's flashing and it drops to 35, we're gonna keep that 35. So essentially from the wings all the way to the driveway to the sewer plant would be 35 all times. Then 45 beyond that in each direction to the city limits.
Yeah, just carrying that on through, it's consistent with what Mount Vernon's planning on doing as well. Should have, you're in the map, I think you have pictures from, all the way from Irish Lane all the way to east city limits, it would have been. Trying to kind of look at that whole aspect, spend it to the county as well. I'm not sure what they're going to do, haven't heard anything from them. But, you know, we're hoping that everybody along that path can make it consistent to keep it, not confusing for the drivers that are traveling those. We have a lot of concerns at the Highway 30, or the Business 30 Country Club Drive entrance to the golf course there in the bottom intersection of First Route. And so we think that 45 is gonna drop that, obviously with the reduction in traffic flows as well. So we're working on all that stuff, looking for, so we feel these are appropriate. Pushes the 35 past the school, keeps that a consistent speed rather than flashing when the school's in or schools out and creating confusion there, it's just gonna push that to the west edge, past the, like I said, you said, the sewer plant drive. Improve safety, especially with your residents that are walking back and forth there all the time with the crosswalk whether school's in effect or not.
So in front of Dollar General, it would be 35?
Correct.
And then once you get past Dollar General, it's gonna kick up to 45? Because that other area that's a problem is right up from the Country Club turn where you turn left to go into Lake Riperton.
Yeah, so I, you know, I would also, as we continue to have further discussions on that, I know we've had requests for turn lanes and different things like that. So I think those are definitely parts of conversations that we can have as both cities work towards improvements and doing things that are, you know.
Has Mount Vernon did anything on this yet?
It's on our council agenda for the next meeting.
Because what, I mean, when we drop, drop it to 45, we kind of gotta do both at the same time.
And I have not, I don't believe there'll be a whole lot of, I've said it to them, they've already heard about it. It sounds like everybody's pretty in favor of the 45-35 concept. I don't know if there's been an official vote here.
But that, that, I think, so... 25, so, and get one reading, and then eight. So I mean, you might be looking first of March that it goes into effect, right? That'd give us three, that'd give us one.
Which like Brandon said too, though, I mean, when you're changing speed limits and putting new posts in and different things like that, it's gonna have to take some cost, but to get some of that done. If you get a signed order, that'll be big enough for that area, different things like that, so it'll definitely be a process.
Worst case scenario, even if they decided not to, I still think we can proceed with ours because it's not like it's going 55, 45, 55. It'll just be going 35, 45, and then if Mount Vernon didn't change, when you get into Mount Vernon, it would be 55. So it's not like it's...
But then they go to 45, don't they, like up by the roundabout?
So if, we're gonna take, we're pushing the 35 to Hillview Drive, so that Oak Ridge Housing Development area across from the dog park. We're gonna push it to the east of that. So the 35 will come all the way out to just east of that location. So it'll be, it'll turn 45 as you're going down the hill, coming towards Lisbon, you're going down the hill after you pass that housing development.
So you'll be 35, and then you'll go to 45, and then you'll go back up, and then you'll go back to 32.
And it'll be 45 all the way into Lisbon, all the way to your sewer plant road.
So you said we can't do the science and stuff, so if we approve it now...
I mean, we can approve it now and put it effective date on.
Okay.
The thought is, you know, with the three readings, usually you guys like doing that. By the time we did that, you're thinking six weeks. So I would think maybe by then, hopefully.
In addition to that, timeframe you're looking at from there, just know that as a general law enforcement, anytime there's city ordinance changes and stuff like that, we give 30 days of warnings before we take any enforcement action on anything like that as well. So, you know, if there's changes, we're gonna give, you know, we may stop somebody and say, hey, by the way, the speed limit changed, be aware of that and go from there. But we won't start enforcing it for at least 30 days.
Well, that's gonna take us time to order something.
I actually got Travis working on that with the red, red alert, you know, the flags to show the change, so it'll catch your eye, so.
Any other questions?
The last, the last one, is removing the special 30 mile an hour speed zone on Cemetery Road between South Jackson and the east limits. So part of the ordinance, if you see the changes from before, from Jackson to the east limits is actually under two different speed zones, one says 25, one says 30. So we went with the 25. That's probably a better speed there than 30. But if you guys think it should be 30, we can switch it.
Anything else? Motion to go out of public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
First reading of chapter 63.04, special speed zones.
I'll move to approve the first reading.
Do you want that one that Brandon was just talking about, speed 25?
Yes.
I think so.
I think so.
A motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Sarah.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Aye.
Nate.
Aye.
Sarah, or John?
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Possible suspension of rules and placing ordinance on third and final reading. A motion? Nays for lack of motion. Resolution 04, 2021, improving historical preservation for appointment.
Make a motion to approve, Ms. Kibbe.
A motion to have a second?
I second the motion.
I second the motion.
Motion is second. John?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Me?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Set public hearing for budget amendment number two for fiscal year twenty-one. Our next meeting would be February first or the eighth?
I actually set it for the twenty-second. We have to wait for...
We're still waiting for a timeline on the phase one of the sports complex. We should be getting that this week, so then we'll know how much is gonna be done in this actual fiscal year and how much will be done next budget year. But the main reason for the, but, second budget amendment is because of all the damage from duration and COVID. We'll be getting revenues from repairs after COVID and we get, we'll be getting insurance money back for duration and also premium money for that. So we did have quite a few expenses for, for that, which normally you are supposed to budget those expenses before doing amendment, before you spend those, that money. But in this case, there's no city in Iowa that's gonna be able to do that. So look, look for us to get written up in our audit this year, but there's, there's nothing you can do.
You did sound like you was on brand in this yet.
Credit's gonna get written up this year. There's, there's nothing you can do. I mean, when you have an emergency, you have to spend those funds before you can get the amendment done.
We're putting, we're putting the highway, the highway money for the D O P, I believe, will be in there too.
Yeah, we did, we see that money as revenues, that money included in our budget, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the public hearing to be set for February twenty-second.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Table correspondents?
Connie just mentioned she had put in some boards around the community. So I put in the school board meeting minutes that I received. I'm gonna try to submit those whenever I receive them so that way you guys know what's going on downtown.
I was going through my packet, and I thought that was part of Ms. Kibbe's application to be on the historical. Yeah, so I thought that there was something in there with them talking about like something that made her qualified or something. So I read it like five times looking for the packet, but the phone wasn't there.
You should read my notes.
I started, but then I was like, why am I reading this when it was gonna be?
Well, I did read in their minutes that they're looking to do a, a meeting with the city because every single time we've had to cancel due to COVID. So we might want to reach out to them and try to schedule something that...
So I did those updates for six years and you're telling me how you didn't read them?
Not really.
Okay.
I just spent...
I kinda got used to not having very much information, so I just love it.
So anyways, I don't know if we wanna reach out to them again and see about...
We usually, we usually did those in April and October.
April, yeah. We didn't have any this year, so.
I think April, they...
We had canceled because of COVID.
School sit in there. Shots by them, so. Alright, city engineering report. Are you on there?
No, he's not.
Do you hear anything from Dave? Brandon?
I don't know.
Public's work director, anything from Travis?
He's sleeping.
He's asleep.
Uh, the only thing I will say is, uh, we had repaired the dump truck on Sunday, so I went down there and the guys were in plow and snow and we all worked to get that. And I went up to get parked today up in Manchester and it's back up and running, so we got it, got it ready for the storm, so.
Is it for Brandon or for Travis?
That's all I can say.
Parks and Parks Director?
Um, I have one thing as all, and that is that we have one quote. So while we have two quotes so far, we're waiting on one more for the cameras. So as soon as we have them all, we'll send them your way.
What company did you end up, is it the Iowa?
We have, so we did Iowa Surveillance and then RC Tech and what was the last one that came?
Maximum Solutions.
Maximum Solutions. So we're waiting on Maximum Solutions quote, and then we'll send those.
I was just curious, did you get that quote?
Now, I heard Nate say something tonight about some vinyls ready. Are you doing something to that vehicle that you're driving?
Yeah, we're just rewrapping it, all black.
Oh, okay.
Done with them?
Yeah.
Please, please defer to the report.
So I don't have anything critical wise or for your incident reports or stuff like that. We are still waiting for the data inversion from Lisbon's old software into our new software. I don't know if you have anything related to anything like that for them?
I don't.
Transition is going well, other than technology-based platforms, which is pretty much everything that we do. We're trying to get it, making sure to get emails transferred over. You should have all seen the, the new logo that we just put out to everybody. We thought that was a really good representation, kinda worked through that, and we're pretty pleased to get a lot of positive feedback from that as well. So we have patches ordered, and it takes about four weeks for those to get. You'll start seeing those getting deployed under our uniforms. Brett Ricker is already working on vehemographic re-dos for the, the stuff on that and getting them operated in Lisbon put on there. So you'll start seeing that as soon as he can get to them as it goes through. It's just gonna, I said, I keep telling the officers too, it's just gonna be a, a process that we go through and, and get it through there. And eventually I've applied for a new email platform, so it'll be one unique email for the police department, over in Lisbon PD email rather than City of, one or the other, from that aspect. We'll try to clean that up a little bit as well. So, so far, so good.
Good. I will say, and I don't know if I'm just noticing it more or something, I don't, I don't think that that's the case, but I will say that probably eight out of ten times when I'm out and about, I see an officer. And again, maybe I'm just paying attention more because it's on my mind, I don't know. But they're very, you can see them, they're out, they're about, they're here.
We're definitely trying, and we've actually had two officers on vacation, so they're back and getting ready to come back in. So we're kinda back to full staff again a little bit, except for Emily who's in the academy. And then she'll hit the ground running with us in April. So the spring will be good, and I said in about six months from now, I expect we'll be in good shape, I think, I hope.
Yeah, it's great to see. I, I mean, they're definitely miserable there, and it's nice to see, so.
And I, I haven't, I mean, I've had some people talk to me about it, and everybody's response has been positive for it, so. I'm glad we get, I'm glad we moved on with this. I'd like you to move on with that.
You know, I will tell you that we were having a conversation the other night with some people, and it was mentioned that back in like two thousand, they were trying to get these, that they were working really hard to get these two departments together. So I mean, this council, really, I mean, this is probably our legacy as we sit up here today. This is probably what, you know, I mean, really, because this is something that they put, no, there's other stuff we're definitely gonna be remembered for. This is our legacy. Come on, you guys. But this is something that they've been trying for a long time, and the fact that we were able to actually get it accomplished is really something that we should be proud of.
Like I said, I started...
Regardless of how hard it was to get there.
I started with Mount Vernon in ninety-three full-time, and I know the conversations were going on in the mid-nineties, ninety-six, ninety-seven. And then I became involved in, what, two thousand twelve or whatever it was.
And I think you said that you've had like three or four different conversations that you kinda thought were headed in that direction and just never panned out.
Yeah, two thousand twelve, two thousand sixteen, two thousand twenty. About every four years, a little cycle.
There was one thing that paid good out of two thousand twenty.
No, I think, like I said, I think it's working out with them. You know, now that everybody's back on vacation, you'll start to see more of the two officers out and stuff like that a little bit too, so.
Well, I think we have a lot to be proud of, but I think that's definitely one of the best.
Absolutely.
Alright. Fire Chiefs, Fire Chiefs, City Administrator Board. Fire Chief first.
Um, I do not, I'll, I do, this is kinda more EMA, but COVID vaccines update. I had Christina put it out on the city Facebook page. It's posted on the wall out here. But Lynn County Department of Public Health will be moving to phase one B starting February first. There's five tiers in one B. Just real quick, first responders, police firefighter, social workers, school staff, daycare centers, is tier one. And I should put this, the first, the first order of priorities, anybody sixty-five years and older, that's, that's first and foremost before any of this. Tier one, I just mentioned. Tier two would be, uh, food distribution, congregant settings, they can't allow for social distance, individuals with disabilities living in home settings or their direct care staff. Tier three would be staff living in congregant settings, which does not include college dormitories. Government officials would be also a tier three. Tier four, yes, that would include you and the staff here. Tier four would be inspectors responsible for hospitals, long-term care facilities, and child safety. And then correctional staff and individuals incarcerated would be tier five.
Say that last part again.
Correctional facility staff and individuals incarcerated are tier five.
Where's the over sixty-five again?
Over sixty-five. Lynn County said they should start on February first.
Really?
Uh, there's a thousand places statewide where you can go for the, for the shot. A lot of local pharmacies and like the CVS, Walgreens, IVs, I think there's a number of those that are also participating.
So Brandon, when we get to our tier, will you let us know?
So Lynn County Public Health will send out, so they've already asked me about the firefighters. So I have a list of firefighters. So then they give me a green light, they tell me what the day is and what the time slots. And then I reach out to the firefighter just like I did to medical people. They will then fill out, fill up a time, and then they go to get their vaccine. So as this comes along, they will reach out to all the entities involved to see how many, what the number of people are that want it. So there will be an email that I'll be sending out at some point to say who wants it and who doesn't. And you'll know then that Lynn County's reaching out. For the firefighters, I wanna say they reached out probably around mid-January.
Can I ask how many firefighters are getting it?
Probably about ninety percent of everybody. Obviously, they're, they took the medical, the people who are doing the medical calls and certified folks that went first. And then we go for our second on February first as well, so.
Where would public works department workers fall on that list? Cause I mean, they're responsible for water, sewer, and lots of, you know, municipal utilities that all of us depend upon.
I can ask, um, the state, so the CDC, if you go on their site, they have the breakdown of one B and one C. It's my understanding the state hasn't approved one C yet, but I'm assuming they will. It's, it's pretty, one B was almost identical. I wanna say they were in one C on the CDC, but, and as this, you know, if you look at, you just think just in Lynn County alone, there's a lot of people. I mean, if you think of firefighters and just firefighters and police officers in Lynn County alone, it's, it's a lot.
Wasn't the school on there?
School, teachers, I mean, it's a lot of...
Lunch ladies?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, hopefully within two weeks, Johnson Johnson comes out with their vaccine too. That's a one dose for me.
Yeah. So, city administrator report. So I had this weekly meeting with FEMA. They're asking about the siren. I guess that was one of the holdups. I went down and talked to Scott at the insurance company. The siren was never submitted for insurance reimbursement, so that, I did that. The check has been approved. They're gonna send out the check tomorrow, and now FEMA is moving forward to the next step. So just FYI, if you're wondering where the FEMA money's at, it was delayed because of that, so I'll get you an update later. We posted the public works position. It'll actually be two weeks this coming Friday. We've received several, like Indeed flyers or responses back along with several applications. We even got one from Hawaii, so, you know, we'll see how that goes. But there's, uh, there's quite a few, uh...
Last time we did this with the public works department, we didn't get to see the applications until like literally the night that we, I would like to see them a little sooner so that, you know, we could look at them.
Sure.
Probably a year coming.
I don't mind doing that, whatever he's reading. Actually, I don't...
There's probably, with the Indeed and the, and the applicants, I'd say, or the full applications, I'd say there's forty-five.
Wow.
So.
Oh, wow. Good girl.
Now, those Indeed people didn't fill out the actual applications, they just, you know, they respond back with the, the, but still, there's, there's quite a few.
I'm just curious, how long are we gonna wait until we start looking at them and get it filled?
That's up to, I think, it's my understanding, the, it has to be open for two weeks, I believe. Is that the timing?
I, I do not believe so, and I'll tell you why. Because when we did the last one, we put position positions. So I don't technically think we really even had to post again if we didn't want to, but we decided to, to see what we would get.
Sure, and it's been two weeks, so. Well, it'll be two weeks Friday.
Anyways, I'm off on Thursday, so I'm gonna come in.
Okay. Yep. Talked about the dump truck. Uh, don't believe we're gonna have to have a budget meeting on February third. We talked about that last time. I think we can get them all done on the February first meeting, so. RC Tech was here today to work on the room. They thought they could get it done, but they didn't have enough time. They did have to put the little strip in over there, just because of that wall. If you remember, this was originally designed for a FEMA structure.
Yeah.
And so it's all, I can't get through there, so. As Grayton said, we're waiting on the bids for the cameras downtown. The duration damage and repairs, currently we have received funding, or funds from insurance on that. However, there's still a lot of money sitting out there waiting for those repairs to get done. So I'm starting to meet with people to look at that. One thing with what Ann was saying, do you want me to see if E and C will come out since that was a storm damage related and see if they will do the structural, see if the building's structurally sound so we don't have to pay that engineer to, to potentially come do that for them?
I mean, they don't, they'll hire their own engineer.
What's that?
E and C, I mean, they're...
Well, I think right now, I don't think that's gonna take place, plus we request it.
The, the insurance company is gonna say, you know, tear it down. They're gonna make sure that somebody says, "Tear it down," you know. I, no, I understand what you're saying.
So I guess what I mean is...
But you're saying we could save that money?
Yeah, what I'm saying is, let's have them tell us it's structurally sound, because if it's not structurally sound, I think you could link it to the duration.
Yeah.
My point. So why spend the money to, to fix it, to make it structurally sound if it's already on an insurance claim?
Agreed.
Yeah.
That's good.
So.
I'll make a good move.
I'll, I'll, I'll work on that and let you know about that. Um, I think that the...
Cameras that you're talking about downtown, we're probably over at the park with them cause the server is in the pub house.
Yep.
Are they looking at, are we looking to move it somewhere else? Can we put it out, you know, seat title and put it out junction?
They think it's possible that they can move it over to the pavilion.
Oh, it's in the pavilion.
The only issue with that is people use the pavilion, so they would either have to put it up high to where nobody can...
Build a cage for it.
Yeah, or put a cage. That was actually one of the recommendations that they gave, so that's a good thing you brought that up. They can make a cage somewhere to put it in and lock it so nobody has access to it. So we have options.
It's a server, you said?
Yeah, server box. So the one actually that's in the poolhouse thing now, two of the three guys said that it's not in good shape and that it's kinda resting away.
Chlorine, chlorine gas.
But they did say that they could use, reuse the camera, so that's a positive. They just won't be able to reuse the box. So you saved money there.
I have, cause putting it in the pavilion ain't gonna be better, I mean.
It's hot.
If you put it in there, that's what's hurting it, is the heat and humidity.
Well, I think it might be better off putting it out at junction to tie it along with that.
Well, I think they said it was the chlorine chemicals and stuff in that.
That's, that's what I...
That's what they told me, the chemicals were way out of it.
It's, it's the heat too.
I'm sure, I'm sure it is.
It's probably a mixture of everything that...
Yeah, but how hot do you think those pavilions get? I mean, if anything, in the winter, I think they get too cold.
I would think the pavilions, because they have just the metal door, the thin metal door, is if the chlorine shed has the solid door with brick all the way around. But, I don't know, something.
Is that the acceleration now?
How big would the server be?
I don't know.
The one that's in there, and there's two, so one that's in there now, there's one smaller one and then one bigger box. So there would be two, but I mean, they just put cabinet up, but.
I have a cabinet in a climate controlled environment.
How close does it have to be?
How close?
Yeah.
So the, the cameras that are on the pavilion run from that server?
Yeah, so.
But they Wi-Fi connect.
I think it's gotta be.
They're Wi-Fi connected.
Truth or something?
It's gotta be, yeah.
Is it line of sight or is it?
It's line of sight because he talked about the history center being in line of sight of the gazebo down here on the corner, so.
So would like the concession stand building?
That's too far.
Too far. Well, I think you got the same issue.
I mentioned that.
Also not heated or, or cool.
But some of the storage facilities, we could probably try to heat or cool if we needed to. You know, like that one back storage area that goes up or whatever, we could probably figure out a way.
Yeah, but it might be too far away.
Yeah, yeah.
He said it was too far.
He did say.
Yeah.
What we're thinking downtown is above the history center, put the camera going both directions. Went down to gazebo downtown. Um, we could also pivot those around for Cybercrime Days. Um, I think if you do that, we can, we located some money with some police funds that we could use it for public safety. So, um, hopefully that's an avenue for funding for it.
Yeah, it's a weird house. Tree of the gazebo. They have a green tree that's topped on. Think we could get it down.
We've got some ashmallowing left in the budget this year. Your mother would be very happy if we did.
She keeps bothering me every time you crack mine.
The tree that was planted there, the branches are so fine that we can't put ornaments on there or heavy lights because they just fall down. So it wasn't the proper tree to be planted there. So, and then deratio took the top off, so.
Blessings to this guy.
That one and then there's one on my brother's market near the sign that is dying too, that's gonna have to be replaced this year. That's funny, cause only half of it's dying. Half, it's half brown and half green.
Oh, yeah.
But it's an arche.
It's kind of brown, too. They spray it.
It's probably sprayed from the cornfield that got that half, yeah. So we might have to move them in a different spot.
Councilor for John.
Um, I agree. I think combining police departments is a great move forward. And I think we owe a, a debt of gratitude to Doug for picking that happen. I think he's very instrumental in that happening. Uh, Southeast Lynn, of course, needs drivers. You have to deliver food. They're going through a lot of food. You've got a lot of, uh, public support, uh, to help people during these times. And, uh, anybody that's interested in doing a little volunteer work, uh, there's always a job that needs to be done on Southeast Lynn. They did, uh, hire the courage person that they haven't had for the last few years, so. Uh, they're doing much better now. That's, uh, pretty much all I have.
Travis. Um, so what's the timeline on, on getting the camera and everything there?
He actually thought he could get it done today, but they're here till about six and couldn't get it done.
Oh, okay.
It should be for the next meeting.
Okay, cool.
Once he gets it in, I'm gonna hopefully get it in service with him to see how it all works and.
All right. And then the other question I had was, I know that they had talked about a annexation survey or something along that. Did we ever, did that just kind of stop or did we continue to do that?
That will be made up today.
Um, well, we got a bill from the engineer today and there was time billed on there for that, so they must be working on it.
Okay.
I know last meeting he was gonna report something, but he was waiting for something else. He, he wanted to report something on, something about it. I can't remember what he said. I, I don't remember what.
So let's put a bug in his ear so that we can get that information to him.
Yep.
And then the other thing that was talked about was doing a housing survey. Do you know if that ever got done or is going to be done?
Nate.
Um, I don't have anything new. I echo what, um, Stephanie and, and John said, that the police merge was an amazing thing. You worked so hard to help us make it really a very easy transition and for the other things. That's it.
Stop.
Oh, I don't have anything. Um, I too will echo everybody who mentioned, thank you for all the hard work that you put into it. Um, I too have had a lot of people come up to me and, you know, they were kind of skeptical on the whole thing. But I think now that they see what we're getting out of it, it puts a, a peace of mind and ease to them. So I'm, I'm excited and I'm glad that we did it. And I was glad to be part of it. So, um, that's really all I have.
Um, all I got is they're gonna do this system in here. Is that the same system you guys have done?
So we'll have the individual where we can hit them. Enjoy the, all the mics? I don't know if they're gonna, I don't know if they're changing their mics or not.
Or is it just gonna hook it?
They did.
I believe it's gonna, is Christina still on?
Yes. Christina?
Yes, um.
Um, go ahead, Brandon.
Christina, are they using the existing mics in here or do they have the push button one similar to Melbourne?
They're using our existing equipment. Anything that we have that they can use, they're going to.
Perfect.
Okay, perfect. And they're, they're gonna teach you guys how to work it, I would imagine?
Yes, they, I just don't think they got to that point today.
Okay. No, I would imagine not if they didn't get, um, it done. So, all right, thank you.
And we're gonna, no emergency till?
Six P M.
Six P M, I don't know, six P M. A little bit right now.
Coming down.
All right, meeting adjourned.
All right.